Welcome, everybody, to the Northern Plan Board's meeting of Tuesday, July 26, 2022. Again, as this is a hybrid meeting, members of the public and members of the board are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Northern Public Library at 68 East Main Street. For those who wish to join through video, there is a Zoom link available in the meeting agenda. You can also join via the Zoom app using meeting ID 6389291060. There's also a dial-in number available, and the meeting is also being able to be viewed at a later date with cable access channel 15. In addition, please feel free to question -- email questions to the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, seated to my right, whose email address is listed on the agenda as well. Again, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting is being conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with the book of law. Please note that an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as courtesy to public and board members. The meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt a virtual broadcast unless required by law. And just for everybody's edification, we do have one member of the board joining us for that evening, which is Mr. Arts, who you can see here on the screen. So with that out of the way, get into some planning board business and policy. I don't think we have anything general to discuss at that point, other than I'll make a general, me a couple of myself. I think that in light of what happened a couple of meetings ago with Wading River Estates, I think that I may send it to Brian. If we're going to review anything related to a past decision, we should have the plan available in our files to review ahead of the meeting. Brian put together the decision, which was great. I think it would have been helpful for us to see the plan, just to make sure that we all see it. So that's a me a couple on my part, and something we can do moving forward. Bills and warrants. Brian, do we have anything specific in terms of additional bills to discuss, other than the agenda items here?
Just Verizon.
Verizon bill. Is that going to stop for the time being, or is that being taken over by you?
It's being taken over by me.
Okay, then. This is bill for town staff cell phone, which shockingly cannot be changed to any format, other than signing it every single month. Okay. We don't think we have any bills and warrants, or bills and warrants, we just did, I apologize. We don't have any minutes to approve at this point, because Brian is doing a lot of other things.
There were minutes.
There were minutes, I apologize.
May?
Yes, there were.
May 24.
May 24. Wow. I agree, it's firing at all cylinders right now, so I'm gonna take a sip of water. Do any members of the board have any adjustments to the minutes that were submitted, that they had not already shared with Brian, or that they'll need to be discussed with the board?
Motion approved on May 24th minutes.
Second. We have a motion by Alan and a second from Wayne. Is any further discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Okay. Hearing none. Jim, with Jim Remote, I am going to do a roll call here, so I'll just go through everybody by name, and I'll start with Eric. On.
Aye, approved.
Okay. Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. There we go. That takes care of the May 24th minutes. Moving on to the A&R endorsement for 38 Barrow Street, which is a continuation from our prior meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the additional materials that were submitted along with the agenda, and does that clear up the clarif -- the questions that we had at the last meeting?
Can I ask a question in regards to those?
Sure.
But in regards to D, do I understand that Lot 5 doesn't currently contain a dwelling? So once this A&R is approved, it could be further subdivided in accordance to the zoning bylaws?
Pulling it up on the screen here. So Brian, is that your expectation?
That it's going to be.
That it's being pointed out under such, under Section D?
I'm not saying that's the intent, I just want to make, I want to understand that because there is not a dwelling, they could conceivably further subdivide this after the A&R is approved.
I mean, in theory, if it's a lot without a dwelling on it, it could be reduced, as long as those new lots also met the conforming dimensions, that would just be something that we would approach at a later date as a new application.
I was just trying to confirm that with the understanding of D, that's all.
Yeah, there's, nothing says everybody has to do everything at once.
So question on C.
Sure.
How do we know that there isn't another lot that doesn't have the required frontage on the street? We don't have any documents to say whether that's the case or not.
Brian, are you pulling something up here?
I'm gonna do a map to you, just briefly scroll to Barrow Street.
Brian's gonna share the screen in just a minute here. All right, this, this is the law room, okay, here. I agree with you that if we're going to evaluate it on point C, that that should be something that hopefully be provided, because this is a bit tedious.
Wouldn't the word contiguous imply that it's gotta be touching the existing lot Contiguous to it on the same street. That would, to me, that seems to imply sharing a boundary. Am I misinterpreting?
So pulling up the, let's hear again. So there's not another lot, such a lot of frontage, less than required by contiguous to it on the same street. Yes, that would seem to be, imply that it shares a boundary and it's on the same street, as opposed to something like this.
Or, yeah.
I agree.
That could be worded 18 ways more clearly, but.
Ways.
I'm gonna put it on the list for town here.
No, I don't need to waste 30 minutes of the public's time. Okay. Any further questions about the endorsement for 38 Barrow Street?
Motion to approve A&R endorsement 15756.
And just to confirm, this is a motion to endorse?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Laura, for the motion, and Alan for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motions? Okay, I'll go through the roll once again. Eric, I will start with you.
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we have the plans here, so if a member who is here is able to sign that before we leave this evening, we'll do that one more time. The next item on our agenda, we're gonna try and do the Pine Street project at the end, just to make sure we get the other end out of the way here. We do have a continuation of the public hearing for 280 South Washington Street, which has been continued a number of times, and the applicant is again asking for it continuous to August 30th. My understanding is that there are negotiations related to the commercial side of this project, which is the reason for the delays, is that the short version?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're working with the neighbors.
Okay. Have they given any kind of timeline, when they expect this to be resolved, rather than just continuing to, continuing to develop? Okay.
We have opened it, correct?
Correct. No, we have not. So if we have any, I think it might be helpful if we, the next time we speak to the applicant, if they have some kind of a timeline beyond this August 30th, if they want to continue again, maybe that'd be helpful. But other than that, do they have any questions in terms of moving forward with the applicant's request? Okay, so looking for a motion to continue?
Motion to continue, SP 12737 to August 30.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Laura for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Eric, I'll start with you again, that's what you get for sitting next to me.
I know, right? Ah, yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne? Sorry. Please do this one more time, I think you got it on top. Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Continuance is approved. The next four items on our agenda are all connected. As we discussed at our last meeting, they are requests to reimburse the remaining balance fund from peer review accounts. These are tied to special permits 493, 10 Commerce Way, 472, Zero South Washington Street, 46 Commerce Way, Special Park 466, and Special Park 454A for 60 Commerce Way. Brian, do you know if we have anybody from ConDent here in person?
Yes.
It has been far too long.
It has been.
Again, if you just introduce yourself to members of the board, and we'll run through these together.
Hi, Jeff Fornio with ConDent, real estate firm. So the four properties, 10 Commerce is, was a proposed addition onto 10 Commerce Way that has since expired and has not been built, and it's gone through that, that process. Zero South Washington Street was the Spears Manufacturing Building, so they've been occupied, has gone through a certificate of occupancy and also a certificate of compliance with the Conservation Commission. 46 Commerce Way, which is the NOAA building on the left of Commerce, also received its certificate of occupancy, no water conditions requiring a certificate of compliance is required on that site. And 60 Commerce Way is the Ryder Building way up at the rear of Commerce Way, which received both CO and certificate of compliance as well from the Conservation Commission. So Brian informed us there were proceeds left over from the peer review, that's why we're here, so I guess in the essence, we should try to close that out and clean up the accounting.
Okay. With these properties, do you see any reason, I guess specifically potentially with 10, whether that account is worth keeping open in the interest of not making finance people on both ends do things again if that project were to come back to life, or not at all?
I, I, not at all at this point, because the property has since been sold twice since our ownership, I believe, and then, and then the existing permits and the approvals have expired.
Okay.
So.
Any members of the board have any questions relating to these projects?
Do you want four motions, or you want to do them all at once?
I think it's probably best we do them as four motions, since they are listed that way on the agenda.
Good.
Okay.
A motion to approve the request for reimbursement of SP 493.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Laura for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Eric, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Alan, do you want to keep going, or do you want somebody else to motion?
A motion to approve our request to reimburse SP 472.
Second.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Laura for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Eric?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Alan, do you want to keep going, or do you want somebody else to motion?
A motion to approve our request to reimburse SP 472.
Second.
Thank you, Alan and Laura again. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Eric?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And one more.
Motion to approve request to reimburse SP 454A.
Second.
Okay. Thank you again. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Eric?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So all four of those approved. Jeff, does the point of information, do you feel there's anything about the process that could be smoother, could be improved, or anything like that, or just fairly standard for how town work?
It's fairly standard.
For better or for worse?
Right, right, and there's a lot of different peer reviews that we've gone through, so different vendors all over the place, from Bolsox Conservation and Landmark, so, but these were projects that were sitting there and have been occupied in, you know, two, three, five years old, so, so I just say alerted to us that we should clean it up.
I believe the record you found was point for BD7, is that correct?
That was the oldest, yes.
People are not responding to?
Prior to our ownership. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So the final item on our agenda is a continuation of the definitive subdivision plan 13932 and special permit 14774, also known as Zero, 126, 128, 154 Pine Street, and Zero Wood Road. Yes, it's continued from June the 28th. I know we have members of the applicant here, but just to go through order of operations here once again, we have a number of people here. What I'd like to do in terms of sequencing here, obviously, the applicant has gone through some plan updates and some discussions on their end, so I'll ask them to give those, have a discussion on any other applications in progress with Conservation on the boards. We have members of the peer review team here, I believe, to discuss the project. I know there was an updated peer review on the traffic study included in our information. And we also have some information from the Water Department in our folder, which we can go through, and then obviously, we'll have plenty of time for members of the public to speak here. When we get to that point, I will try and give deference to people who did not speak at the last meeting, so that everybody can have a chance to speak, those people can have a chance to speak first, if that makes sense for everybody. Okay? So with that, I'll ask the applicant to come forward here, the podium is here, and we can obviously pull up anything on the screen that you'd like to discuss, so members of the public who are joining remotely can see it. So from, I'll let you get settled here, and then let us know what your latest updates are in relation to the project. Do you think it makes sense just to pull up the, the plans?
I do have some things that haven't been submitted, I just wanted to quickly move them.
Okay. If they have not been submitted, just please try to.
I don't have, I can, I can do it verbal, I'd be happy to do it verbally, if that makes more sense.
Just to make sure that we have time to look at stuff before it's in front of us.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Forbes, who's in Consulting Engineers, and your idea of how to run the meeting was exactly the, what I had laid out here, so I'm just gonna go over some of the things that have happened since the last meeting for everybody. We had the Horstley and Witten comments on the, on the project, and we had not had a chance to respond to them at the last meeting, so we've, all of the engineering questions not related to traffic or environmental have been updated, and we've got a response drafted. We have not submitted that back to Horstley and Witten yet, and the reason for that is, and we can adjust this, if this is something the board would want. I don't feel it's a good idea to have piecemeal, have, look, this is partially updated plan, we're asking for a review, we kind of have a lot of items that we had to address, especially since Claire went to the Conservation Commission, so I was hoping to get one consolidated response and plan update and submit that, if that's okay with the board, so. A couple of the things that we also addressed that weren't in response, that weren't in response to the Horstley and Witten comments, where Mr. Meyer pointed out that the lot sizes on the conventional plans were off by a couple hundred feet on a few of the lots, and those have been adjusted. Mr. Chairman, you had asked me to look into the parcels A, B, and C, if you may recall, it was kind of just like parcels that were out there, and I did look at that, and what they, the, it's a department to review, had asked us to do is, we had a couple of the stormwater basins hanging out onto the open space. They told us, I think it was Paul who told us, that we needed to get those onto a lot. So what we, rather than, rather, rather than keep them as parcels A, B, and C, what I've done is I've just added them into the adjacent lots to clean things up.
Okay.
Lots are bigger, now they encompass the entire basin. The ultimate, nothing changes as far as the open space is concerned, it was all contained on, developed, or developable portions of the property.
You're just erasing a line between them, basically?
Exactly right, exactly right, that's what I should have said, would have gone a lot quicker.
Close enough.
The, like I mentioned, Claire had a Conservation Commission hearing. Prior to that Conservation Commission hearing, additional comments were submitted from Horstley and Witten. We did not have those comments at the meeting, but Claire subsequently got them, so, again, we're working on that, there were quite a few items on that thing to work through, nothing that can't be dealt with relatively soon. We had discussed some, the existing, we had discussed sanitary sewer, the possibility of hooking up the project into the existing sanitary sewer system, and we're encouraged to do so by the Sewer Department, and the applicant has decided since the last meeting that he is going to go ahead and tie the system, the subdivision into the existing sanitary sewer system, so there will be no, there will be no subsurface septic systems on the site. As you mentioned, we received a memo from the Water Department. I'm sure a lot, I'm sure a lot, if not all, of the neighbors have seen that, if you, if you haven't seen that, I encourage you to read it, it's, there's a lot of information in there. Those of you who did attend the informal meeting that we held in this room on a Saturday morning a month and a half or so ago, it, I know it probably sounded odd that when I told you, if any of you were there, that adding these lots had the possibility of helping the water quality situation on Pine Street, but that's exactly what's represented in the memo from the Water Department, and all it does is, I can quickly just explain that, the sediment that's forming in the pipes is because the water is not moving through it. The more the water moves through, the more the sediment does not settle, doesn't, isn't allowed to settle out into the pipes. So what happens is, there's so little water use on Pine Street, according to the Water Department, that that, that sediment settles out of the pipe, and then when they do a flush a hydrant, or do a flow, fire flow test, or fight a fire, or anything of that nature, it kicks up, it's a big surge, a lot of water is utilized, and it kicks up the sediment in the pipes. So, again, he is the expert on this, not me, so I suggest, again, there's a lot of information in that letter, it's a couple of pages long, and there's a lot of information, some of it that I don't fully understand, that I don't understand the town's whole system. So again, I encourage everybody to get a copy of that letter and look at it. We, the Fire Department had chimed in on some of the roadway geometry, and we addressed all of the Fire Department's concerns with the entrance to, to the site, and we've exceeded what he asked for. The representative from Horstley and Witten mentioned in her letter, and we discussed at the last meeting, that additional test bits had to be done on the site to look at the soil conditions and a couple of the spots on, on the site, and how that relates to the stormwater design, and, I don't remember, maybe a week or two ago, we were out there, and we did those test bits that they requested. I also mentioned at the last meeting that we're in the process of putting together the environmental impact statement that is required, and we had originally asked for a waiver for, we've withdrawn that waiver. That is in draft form now, it is a lot, a lot to address in that, so, it's not complete, but we're hoping to get that completed within the next couple of weeks. And again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had hoped to have the traffic engineer there at the last meeting to address some of the traffic concerns. Jeffrey Dirk, I believe, is on the line from Van Ass, who did the review, and Jack Gillan is here, he's, he's the, the traffic engineer that the applicant hired to, on behalf of this project. So I believe we have both, two excellent traffic engineers here, and whenever it's good for you, Mr. Chairman, he's available to discuss his findings, discuss with Mr. Dirk what his findings were on our findings, and discuss with the, with the audience and the board, and maybe traffic a little bit.
Okay.
So that's pretty much it.
That's all the updates you had?
That's all the updates I have, this time.
Okay. So why don't we keep you up here and ask if the board has any questions for you, and then we can move on to peer review in terms of do the back and forth with traffic, and any other peer review that we need to discuss, if that makes sense?
Excellent, it's perfect for us, it's, we anticipated this.
Okay. So Laura, you have your hand up here?
Yes, if you don't mind, the letter by Frank Fornier, the penultimate paragraph says, final sentence, there's an option that the contractor may leave the water main on Pine Street to Brick Street, if we change the direction of the flow and also change the flow rate, is there an intent to do that?
It, it is not, there is not an intent to do that at this time, and it is an option that's open, it's being explored. As a matter of fact, the applicant had a discussion with Mr. Fornier today, yeah, related, everything related to this project, so it's undecided at this point.
I was gonna spend some time specifically on this le, this letter a little bit later before the public comment, because I know it's something that everybody's talked about, and I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to have that summarized. One of the things that, looking at the, this is a question for Claire for you, one of those things that I've mentioned specifically at the Conservation meeting was the ACEC regs, and how that would obviously have a, a significant impact on the project.
Yes.
So if you want to just kind of, when the, when that was mentioned at the Conservation hearing, you just kind of stop for a minute, so I want to give you an opportunity to kind of speak to that, and just kind of give an overall discussion of where the, where your application with CONCOM sits. Obviously, it's, sometimes it's challenging. Obviously, it's, sometimes it's challenging working with two boards looking at the same project on slightly different timelines. So just to make sure that we're all on the same page there.
Thank you. Yeah, that's probably the most important issue for my end at this point right now. And as you've noticed, Claire made her way up here. So rather than me look like an idiot trying to explain it, we'll have an expert talk about it.
Thank you. For the record, Claire Hokel, BC Environmental Consultants. We're the wetland scientists on the project team. So for the update on Conservation Commission, yes, we opened up the last public hearing with them. Discussed all of the comments that came from Horstley and Witten. And the main comment was the regulatory compliance of the project involving wetland fill in an AC/EC or an area of critical environmental concern. And in our application, we noted that we had, our company had peer reviewed a project in a neighboring town recently that proposed a very similar project, residential subdivision with fill in an AC/EC. And as the peer reviewer, we consulted with DEP and got a comment from DEP that the regulations generally are applied to allow that fill within the AC/EC for any limited project. And I understand in our initial submittal, we didn't provide too much supporting information. So in our supplemental information provided to the Conservation Commission, we'll be sure to include more information there. And hopefully, you know, work that stuff out. But we have had sort of correspondence with DEP on that before. So hopefully, we can try to iron that out through our responses.
Okay. Yeah. I think in general, I try to not, try to have conservation in our self, step on each other's toes. But that's obviously something that has this level of impact on the project.
Understandable. Yeah. And that, that's a high priority for us to address and be able to make sure that that item is taken care of before we can move on to a lot of other things.
Okay. Did anyone else on the board have questions, either for Claire or for Bob to come back up here? For, I know you kind of stepped away from the podium. Bill, if you wanted to?
So since Claire's there, I'll go with the one that you'll probably answer better. At the Conservation Meeting last Monday, I believe that you were tasked with doing another wetland study after the spring rains next year. And I know Bob said everything would be tied up shortly. So I'm not sure that that's shortly.
I'm unclear if the spring rains of next year study, what was that referring to?
So it was, I, I watched the meeting on the access channel on, on YouTube. And they said that there wasn't any, the, the wetlands review that has been done was done in the fall with Jennifer Carmina. And they asked about the status of the wetlands after spring rains. And you said at that time that one hadn't been done and they wanted one done next spring, is what, is what somebody on the board had said.
I think you might be referring to the other parcel on Pine Street.
I don't think that's what you were talking about on Monday, last Monday.
So last Monday, when I was tasked to return to the site, that was for wildlife habitat evaluation for the BBW impacts. So I'm focused on identifying the features within the proposed wetland crossing. And then Lisa, one of the commission members, also asked me to look into a potential alternative from Brick Street and sort of do a wildlife study of the alternative roadway layout. I recall that Horstley and Witten requested confirmation if there was a stream channel in the wetland where the crossing is. So I did return to the site since that meeting to gather more information on that and have a response to that. But when we did our Anrat application for this particular project, it was in the springtime. And that's when we did our vernal pools survey. So it was the perfect time of year to do the evaluation of all the vernal pools, which are certified on site. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not sure exactly what the spring evaluation was referring to.
I can, I can watch the, the meeting again and, and have time where we can put it up here, well, at a future meeting, I guess.
Okay.
Regardless, the project needs both boards to move forward.
Oh, yeah. I will, I'll, I'll follow up with John Thomas, too, because I'm sure he watched that video as well. And if he can help clarify that, too, we can certainly iron that out and make sure that I'm covering all the information that they're requesting.
I think this board has always struggled communicating, I think, effectively with conservation. I think we're gonna try to do better at that. So try to. We're gonna get better on that.
And then, Bob, you had said that the plan is now to tie into the sewer. So that would be coming in off of South Washington Street, correct?
No, Burke, Burke Street. The sewer up there, I believe in the, and now what's happening now is we're having a survey done to locate that sewer and give us much more information on the sewer, because there was not any intention of tying into it until a week or so ago. So the, the surveyors were actually out there today locating that sewer. I'll have more information on it at the next meeting. And I'll be able to report to you exactly where we're proposing. We'll discuss with the Sewer Department where they would like us to tie in. And that's where, that's where we'll end up. I'll give you much more information on it the next time.
Okay. Because, because on the cluster plan, Brick Street isn't anywhere near either of those streets. If, if the cluster plan gets approved, Brick Street is basically right in the middle between the two. But it doesn't provide any close access on the property to either of those streets. So that would necessitate a lot of drilling under wetlands, probably.
Well, we, we actually, there's a possibility, and I discussed this with Al, again, we need to know much more about the sewer, which I don't have that information in front of me at this point. But there's actually a possibility that we may be able to avoid the drilling under the sewer that we had proposed. And Claire had proposed with her wetlands filing with the CONCON. It's not, there's not a solid wetlands body that runs all the way through our site. There's openings that we could get out there. So that may be the case, but I don't know. We're gonna have to look at that as well.
Not gonna make you have a crystal ball here.
Yeah, exactly. I just want to point one out, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. The other thing, and it is not related to this board as much as it is to the CONCON. But I just want to point out that this, all of this wetlands crossing, all of this wetlands discussion is for a crossing that we were asked to do by the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
So that's a very important thing that for, I think, for us to point out. We're trying to accommodate their wishes with this. So we had no wetlands crossings, no wetlands impacts on our first layout.
Yep. I understand.
With regards to Brick Street and our potential sewer tie-in, can we also make sure that we are connecting with the engineer for the alternate transportation committee and make sure they're not upsetting anything to do with the rail trail?
I believe that the woman that you had.
That's who I connected you with.
Yeah, she was very nice. And we went back and forth with emails on several occasions. So she is aware of what we're doing. Anything that changed?
Now aware that the sewer is going to be tied in?
No, because it wasn't, it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the table at that time.
Just make sure that.
Absolutely. No, makes perfect sense. There will have to be easements that get, if the water goes up there, sewer, whatever ends up going up there, there will have to be easements associated with those. So they may, they may make for even better walking trails that are there now.
Thank you.
Everything's going to be underground, so it's just gonna look like a walking trail.
Any further questions for Bob at this time? Otherwise, I would love to ask the applicant's traffic engineer and the peer reviewer to discuss traffic in more detail.
Okay, great. I'll introduce now Jack Gillan from his own, his own company, Gillan Associates.
And Mr. Dirk, obviously, I'll let Mr. Gillan go first. And then if you'd like to have a chance to speak to your peer review comments, do that right afterwards.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jack Gillan. John Gillan. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Massachusetts. I've been in the traffic engineering field since 1971. I was doing elder engineering with the other engineers before that since 67. But anyways, I did do a traffic report for this project that I was asked to look at, in the grocery area, which we did. And I did have a chance to take a look at the peer review. And it was quite helpful. There's, I'll get into it, but there's nothing out of the ordinary that I haven't done before with those projects. So that's fine. We'll be able to take care of that. The average daily traffic on, on Pine Street is about, just over 800 vehicles per day. And we looked at what this project may generate on the, on the ones, when the use code. And that was about 22 peak hour trips in the morning and about 28 in the evening. We were asked to look at a different type of subdivision, sickle family homes, which we will do that. But I also noticed that the, the speed out there, the average speed was about 29 miles an hour. But the 80th percentile speed, the speed at which all traffic is traveling at or below, was 34 miles per hour. And that's what we use for calculating the, the stalking site distance and the intersection site distance as well. We also did the capacity calculations at the Plain Street, Pine Street intersection. And found out that the levels of service really don't change. There is no additional delay noticeable delay included to this project. I'm gonna jump right into Jeff's if he doesn't mind and go real quickly through some of the things that we agree on. And, and I'm sure Jeff will clarify anything that I, I don't do such a good job on. And the first was that we had the next intersection salted the site, which is Pine Street or Crane Street. And we agree with that. So we'll be picking that up in the near future and believe it lies, it lives and long.
Just before you get too far afield in that question.
I'm sorry?
Just before you get too far afield in that point, I think this is, are there any state data sets on that intersection available?
I agree with what?
State data sets or other data sets for that intersection?
I'm sure we'll hear what you've got.
Are there any other data sets from the state or otherwise?
No, I had looked at that. The state didn't have any in the town that I was just.
Because right now, this is an area relatively close to a school.
Yes.
So it's challenging to get a peak school time traffic study for another six, seven weeks.
Yes. I'll look back and see exactly when we took the counts. I believe it was early May.
The counts that you did for the other study were in school session. But if you're doing a follow-up, that's kind of, that would be the challenge.
Right. I understand that. I'll try to find before and after accounts. In other words, counts that if we were to try to do them sometime in August, does the, is there another close by station that has counts in both August and in the school and session sites? So I might be able to factor the, the numbers up to account for Stonehill not being in session or some of the practice. Public schools not being in session. I'll take a look at that. You'll take a look at that and.
Well, we'll see if they feel that's a good approach.
Thank you for the chat.
Wheaton.
Wheaton College is the school right next to it. Stonehill's up east.
Wheaton.
That's because I grew up in Stone, you know. I had to work down here a while then, but Chris Young, he still left us down here years ago. Now I'm showing you how old I am.
It's okay. You just had to tell you it's on the brain. I did.
All right. They asked for us to provide a description of available transportation services, which we agree with. And we also will provide that. And I did take a look at the crashes that Mascot had on the other side for years prior to COVID. I didn't want to take crashes during COVID, volumes are down, it averages in. So, but the, the comment I appreciated is if there are crashes out there, we have to look at it. And then we can do the rate with the lower volumes and the crashes, the rate would be the same. So I'll take a look at that. And we'll also look at whether it is a high crash location in an area. So I concur, but it's just comments that we'll be doing that as well. The town of Norton Plain Department, they have, should contact them to see if there's any additional things that I don't know about out there to plan the program. And I obviously, I will do that. And also meet with the Highway Department and Mascot to see if there's anything in that greater area to see if anything would affect their calculations by either something being improved or, or a bridge being closed. We should be aware of that. So we'll check with that. The, the trip generation report comes in different editions depending on how they come out. And I had used the 10th. And I didn't have the 11th at the time. And that's between me and ITB, why they weren't added to me. So I did get the ATL 11th, and I do have that now. And I will use that. And I'll also use the, the land use code that Shepard asked us to take a look at. That's fine. And then he asked if we look at the trip, the trip directional distribution. And I said, yes, absolutely. We will do that after we pick up the new counts and balance the counts. And also take a look at the city roadway improvements or changes that would affect the traffic. And that would affect the directional distribution. I'll take a look at that at that time as well. And input that in waiting. And then the, the traffic analysis include the Pine Street, Crane Street intersection, which obviously we don't. And we'll also add in the requirement to the gas ratio, the delay. And we'll address all of the other background traffic that was involved in that. And we'll compare the, the levels of service. And we'll also compare, by the way, now that Jeff had asked us to look at the, the crash rates. So for the, the. He asked if we could compare the crash rates out here with both the district average and the, the statewide average. So definitely that'll be out there. The sight line's a little bit more tricky, because as you know, you're out there now, you can't see anything. You don't even know where the, where the sight, where the center line of the roadway is. Well, that's all gonna be laid out within the next week. People are gonna be going out there. We're gonna take a look at that. And that will work with our site engineer to put that all on plan, where the roadway is going, where the brightaway is, where the properties are. And explore to us what that sight line would have to look like. And then a profile through that to make sure that we can see over anything that we have to see over, probably a height of another driver's side of three and a half feet, looking at a driver's height. Or no, not looking at a hubcap, oh hell, two feet. In other words, if there's something that's low, we should be able to see it. So we look at that at a height of two feet. So I take that up there. So that's pretty much it. And then they also asked that we make recommendations for the control of both the the jamming way and noise coming out to Pine Street. They probably would be stop sign, but I don't know it yet. I'll take a look at that. Then we'd have to look at internal roadways and how we handle those. And then they also asked that we look at, not just seeing that the site distance works today, but what can we put in place so that we don't lose that over 10, 20 years? So obviously, sometimes we've done it through the use of homeowners association agreements. Sometimes it's become a public screen. So there are different options. And I'm not at that point. I will look at them and I will review that through the town with your office engineer. But hopefully, this is just my road path and where we're gonna go. This is no answer on where we are right now.
Yep. Yeah, I know. And one of the other items, I think, you ran through them all really well. But I know a number of the residents did mention pedestrian safety, because there aren't any sidewalks on the road.
There are no pedestrian sidewalks right now. And there are no bike paths on the road right now.
And it is heavily walked from, despite that.
Relatively.
Relatively, yeah.
I would say I was the traffic engineer in Boston, Brooklyn, Queens. It's a relative, I hear you. And I also, consulting traffic engineer, I put no flag on it and still taking that one. But yeah, we definitely take a look at these. But I don't want to miss, Jeff probably got some different things that you'd like to mention.
Sure. Do any members of the board have any questions? From Mr. Gillan here, or do you have to go straight to the peer review?
So I saw, I don't remember if it was in your report or in the report from Van Ass. But the line across the road to count the number of cars was roughly at about 154 Pine Street at, at the site of one of the two streets. So that sort of tells me that every vehicle that comes from 123 or Plain Street and travels down Pine Street to go to their homes. down Pine Street to go to their homes before 154 was not counted and is not included in the study. And similarly, people who travel on Crane Street, which is just south of 154, not whether they're going out Crane Street to 140 or they're going up to the Taunton Industrial Park is also not counted. It's only if they travel the entire length of the street that it's in your study.
If I could respond to that, the traffic counter, you're correct, was roughly where 154 is that I wanted to have a really good understanding of what the traffic was past the site going either northbound or southbound. The reason we do that, you saw in the figure three, two of the summer report, you could see that we did capture the morning peak hour with the volumes higher during the community peak hour in the morning, then drops up, then it picks up again in the evening peak hour. That's why we're doing the machine count, only to make sure that we have captured the morning and evening peak hour. As you saw, I counted the traffic up at Plain at Pine Street from four in the, from seven to nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon at 15 minute increments. And then we put the four highest consecutive 15 minutes together, which gave you the peak hour, the peak hour. So to say that it wasn't counted, you know, it was included, but the traffic on the, on the machine itself, all of that was for us to make sure we captured it at the intersection where we do the analysis. So it describes the traffic between 154 and, and Plain Street, that was captured when we did the manual count, okay? So, and then we did that on the analysis. So that traffic, we don't have a lot of generated, by the way, between 154 and Plain Street. You don't have an awful lot of traffic either originating or being destined for that. So it gave us a pretty good thumb, you know, idea of what the traffic is doing. But you're right, we didn't know exactly what the traffic is during that, during that hour, but we do know we captured it at the, at the intersection.
So somebody was standing there manually counting cars with a clicker? Okay. And then the study was also done when Wheaton College was not in session. LG Norris was still in session, but Wheaton had already.
Wheaton was out.
Wheaton was out. They already had their graduation and everything.
We knew the seniors were gone. I wasn't sure that everybody else was gone.
Yeah, I mean, I walk my dogs through Wheaton College.
It was quite active when I was there, just so you and I talking here. It was very active when I was out there doing my fieldwork and, and the cows were in the Wheaton parking lot, everything else. So I'll get that, Dave, so I can go clear that up. But there wasn't, I did get a lot of school buses that were from the town school buses.
Right, because there's a, there's an elementary school on Plain Street, which will be part of, I think what, what the chairman mentioned earlier is that in August, the school will not be open yet.
No, I understand that.
And that's, that's a, a public elementary school.
Right. I will identify what that was last year.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from Mr. Gillum here or would you like to hear from Van Ass?
I got one more general question. Development like this, how do you take into account Amazon, UPS, FedEx, three different Amazon drivers every day? I live on a nine-house street and there's more Amazon drivers than anybody on my street.
Good question. The answer is, the Institute of Transportation Engineers is a professional organization. And we all use data that's provided by them and we provide our data to ITE. On many occasions I've collected data and I've sent it in. This is what the land use code was, this is how big it was, whether it be shopping malls, hospitals, schools, whatever. We send that in and they, they interact all the data, they do the data points, the scatter points, they run the F test, the T test, they end up plotting to the logs what the curve would look like, or what the straight rate would be. And then we use that. What it says is they are looking at these different land uses and different sizes. They're looking at what kind of generation is there for that particular use. I did one of the first condominium uses in, in the country. We had condos, we had a condo development in Brookline in 1971, but there wasn't a lot of data about it. So we collected a lot of that data and we sent that in and then they published that as well. But what it says is we don't look at how many work trips are there or how many retail trips were there or who was going to school that day and who stayed home, who had a doctor's appointment. We don't do all that. We take the large approach, what was your land use, how many trafficking, how many left? Not even try to find by truck, just how many vehicles are coming and going. That includes the work trips, it includes the retail trips, it includes the recreation trips, it includes the lawn care, if someone's coming in and cutting your rest, it includes the UPS, it includes Amazon, you just put in the whole mix. And if you have that many studies with that many units, you're gonna be pretty much having a higher level of confidence in, you can, but you can check the regression analysis on how, how good the data is and we can take a look at that.
So basically your trip, when you say there's 28, peak 20, whatever off peak gets counted in there somehow?
Yes, included.
So basically, the more and more Amazon trucks there are, the more of the ITE data is gonna take up and up and up for residential, little by little?
Yeah, well.
At a, at a very.
But you've got to understand too, is that the work trips, we don't know what COVID's going, we know only we're down. We know it's going back. Is it gonna come back to 100%? We don't know. But it, we'll, we'll take a good look at it and make a good estimation on it. Now, the other thing is, is that we look at Amazon, you know, it was a good example. But when you do six or seven single family houses, they may be catches catch in, but now you have Amazon and you have UPS, them look at a neighborhood and they say, oh, we gotta make 20 trips to that neighborhood this week on a Tuesday. You know what? Let's gain those 20 trips together and then they'll go in, they'll make those, and then they'll leave it up.
Yeah, that doesn't happen.
No, I'm not gonna get into that with you now, but, but I'm saying it's included.
It is included somehow.
That's the way, that's the practice, the industry standard, that's the practice and has been approved in court as far as making estimations and.
Thank you.
You have your own, he's very good. You're up here, we.
So ask him to.
Well, he'll, he'll take a look at it, I'm sure.
Any more questions from Mr. Gillum? Otherwise, if anybody from Van Ass would like to speak, obviously, Mr. Gillum's gone through your peer review comments a little bit already, but if anyone else would like to speak to directly, please feel free.
Sure, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dark, I'm the managing partner of Van Ass Associates and we're serving as the board's peer review consultant for the project. So as, as you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Gillum went through our peer review comments, which I expect he'll be providing a response to. So I won't go through all of those comments in detail and I'll just highlight a couple of the points that we had raised. One of the things you'll see is really we're asking for, you know, additional data collection and analysis, so for the board's information as well as for the residents, what you'll see is we have not offered the board any recommendations or potential conditions because we're, you know, the board's not there yet, nor are we. We're at a point based on our review comments that you see is we're asking for the applicant to take additional analysis because the analysis that has been provided is not sufficient for us to make recommendations for the board or frankly render an opinion as to adequacy of the infrastructure to accommodate the project. So we need some more information to be able to get there. So in terms of highlighting some of the overview of our comments, and I think this echoes both some comments from the board as well as the residents at the, at the prior hearing, I mean, the site itself is located between Route 123 and Route 44. So Pine Street serves as a cut through between those two roadways. And as you heard the applicant mention, they have a study area intersection to the north of the site, which would be reflective of traffic that's heading towards 123, but we don't have an intersection to the south of the site, so that would give us the volumes weighted towards Route 44. And that gets to one of the board members' question, which was you measured traffic volumes using those road tubes at your project site, but you're not capturing volumes heading to 123 or 44, or the traffic patterns for that matter. That's really the reason why you want an intersection on either side of the project site so that you can capture that. You're capturing traffic patterns and traffic volumes. And it's important to measure both speed and volume of traffic at the project site because we need that as a data point. I think most importantly, so that we understand the speed of traffic as it relates to those site distance measurements that you heard, the applicant's traffic engineer talking about. So we, we need that data point, but we also need a data point on either side of the site so we can see the changes in the traffic patterns that happen heading towards those two primary destinations on either side of the site. So that's one of the reasons why we've asked for that additional intersection to be added because that's your decision point to the south of the site. The other thing that it does is you heard the applicant's engineer mention the distribution of traffic. So as they generate traffic, they need to say, well, how much traffic is heading towards 123 and how much is heading to the south towards 44? We need the data point on either side to see how our existing residents and traffic patterns in the area, how are they distributing themselves to the north and to the south of the site? So this additional data point to the south will allow us to be able to understand, is the assignment of traffic that they've assumed to the north and to the south reflective of the existing traffic pattern? So that's why we need that additional information. Here at the applicant's engineer also mentioned two things relative to the traffic generation for the project. And what I don't want the board to focus on is, you know, the, the traffic numbers that they've said, net increases in traffic as they relate to how much traffic the project's gonna generate, that needs to be revised. It needs to be revised for, for two reasons. The first reason is exactly what one of the board members was asking about, Amazon. Relatively new phenomenon as it relates to traffic volumes. As we estimate traffic volumes for any project, it assumes or it uses or generates volumes for every type of traffic or user that would enter or exit the facility. So as it relates to residential projects, it includes not only the residential traffic, but it includes service and delivery vehicles, FedEx, UPS, Amazon, as well as US Mail. And so as those dynamics and those types of traffic change over the years, what you see is our databases, traffic engineers that we use is updated. And the most recent edition of publication, as you heard the applicant's traffic engineer mention, is the 11th edition of Trip Generation and that was published last year. So that data includes the most recent set of traffic counts and data that's available for all types of land uses, but residential and land uses in particular. And so that latest data set includes these, the Amazon and all of this e-commerce type of traffic that has been a new phenomenon. And so that's built into those new numbers. So we mass the applicant or redo the trip generation, not only to use the newest edition, which will incorporate and capture that type of traffic, but also with respect to the type of residential units that's proposed. The applicant's traffic engineer, when they did their initial estimates with those numbers that he had mentioned, it assumed basically attached units. So it was if you were looking at duplexes essentially on the site. What's been proposed is single family residential. The traffic characteristics for attached units, either multifamily attached or duplexes, is much different than a single family home, as you might imagine. Traffic volumes for single family homes are much higher. Single family homes produce somewhere around nine to 10 trips on a daily basis per residential unit. A multifamily development, depending on the type, produces somewhere between six to seven trips per unit. So you can see just making that one change is gonna, is going to change the amount of traffic that we're talking about, it's gonna change the impacts as they relate to the development. Not to say that what you're gonna see is, you know, significant backups or delays in intersections, but the percent increase in traffic as it relates to the amount of traffic on the roadway is going to be different than what you've seen in the original traffic study. So that needs to be done, revised, the analysis needs to be revised as a result of that. And so that'll give us as well as yourselves a better understanding of the net impact of the project as it relates to traffic volumes along Pine Street. The last two things with respect to the traffic study, the first is the motor vehicle crash analysis. We are, MAST DOT standards and traditional or typical traffic engineering standards is that not only do we look at the number of crashes, the type of crashes that are happening on the roadway, but we're also need to look at the crash frequency as it relates to the amount of traffic on a roadway. So if you have a roadway that only has one crash, but it has very low traffic volumes, the number of crashes in relation to the volume of traffic on the roadway might be relatively high because it would suggest that if you have low volumes, you shouldn't have crashes or a significant number of crashes on the roadway. When traffic volumes are higher, like if you're on 495 and you have 40,000 to 50,000 vehicles per day going by and you have, let's say, you know, 20 to 30 crashes per year on the roadway, you know, that's not disproportionate to the volume of traffic on the road. However, if you have a roadway like Pine Street with 800 vehicles on a daily basis going by and you have five crashes a year, the frequency of crashes in relation to the volume of traffic might be disproportionate. And so what we look at as traffic engineers is not the number of crashes, but the crash rate. And the crash rate is the number of crashes per million vehicles on the roadway. We compare that crash rate to state averages that MAST DOT publishes. And so what we've asked the applicant to do is, they've quantified the crashes, but we need to understand the frequency of crashes as it relates to the volume of traffic on the roadway to see if it's disproportionate. So they will undertake the, the calculations that we've suggested, and you've heard the applicant's engineer affirm that they're going to do that. So that crash frequency analysis and then comparing the crash rate to MAST DOT averages will then let us come back to you and say, you know, as it relates to the roadway, are, you know, do we have crashes that are disproportionate to the volume of traffic on the roadway? So they're going to do that. And then lastly, the sight line analysis, that is absolutely critical, whether the project is five units or 44 units, it needs to be seen with respect to these new access points that they're providing. You heard the applicant's engineer talk about the vegetation and I know you've probably conducted a site visit. So we have roadways that have a lot of vegetation along those roadways. We need to understand what is the extent of clearing that's gonna be necessary to provide the sight lines for the speed that vehicles are actually driving along Pine Street. That needs to be put on the site plans, both in plan view as well as in vertical view. So we're looking at not only in the horizontal view, as if you're, you know, above the earth looking down on the site, so we can draw triangles to see if you're coming out of the site looking to the left or right, you know, how many trees do I need to clear so that I have clear sight lines? Then we also need to look at it vertically to make sure that there's no objects that with respect to height that would block the visibility. So we've asked the applicant to undertake that analysis. Typically, I can go in the field and measure those sight lines, but given the obscure nature of the trees and vegetation that are there, it really needs to be done on the plans. And so we've asked for them to, to plot that on the drawings so that you can see it on the drawings and then we can understand how much clearing needs to take place to derive those sight lines. So I think that's kind of a high level overview of our comments and adding a little bit more color as they relate to the comments on the traffic study. So we do expect written responses to these comments. That'll give us more information so that we can provide to you a little bit more detail relative to our assessment of what we believe the impacts of the project going to be and ultimately looking at recommendations for you, not only as they relate to the site but off-site. So I know discussion about sidewalks and other facility or pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, motor vehicle safety along Pine Street, we need this information so that that would allow for us to be able to provide to you some recommendations or observations as we look at it from the standpoint of safety along Pine Street. So we'll be waiting on that information. We have a few comments relative to the site plans, pretty standard things, I think you heard the applicant's engineer mention, you know, the, the turning analysis is something that we want to see for both the fire department design vehicle, both entering the project site from Pine Street as well as exiting back on a Pine Street. Given that Pine Street is somewhere between 23 to 24 feet width at the project site or where the project site is located, this turning analysis is going to need to demonstrate that the fire truck is able to make the swings and stay within the pavement area. And so that's why we need this analysis, both within the project site, but also coming in, going from Pine Street, so vast if they provide that analysis. And then lastly, one of the items that we've asked the applicant to look at, and I think it was on just one of the, the project roadways, and I think it was, I may get the name wrong, I think it was Jermaine Way. Looking at the slope or the profiles of the roadway itself, what we want to have is you're coming into an intersection, both within the site or coming out to Pine Street, you want to have a leveling area. So you never want a steep grade and then all of a sudden you intersect the roadway because as you're trying to come down and stop at an intersection during the winter time, so typical conditions that we would have around here, you need a leveling area to be able to get the vehicle down to that stop position and then stop the vehicle and recover if you're sliding, in fact, the leveling area provides for that. But the leveling area is also for sight lines. You don't want someone to be on a grade trying to look to the left or the right and then pull into the roadway and have to try to accelerate. So we, we want, we ask the applicants. So we want, we asked the applicant's engineer to go back and look at the grades and just confirm that they have a leveling area where the slope is no more than 2% for a minimum distance of 25 feet and ideally 50 feet. So the 25 feet is one car length, 50 feet is considered two car lengths. So in particular, looking at both internal intersections as well as coming out to Pine Street to have that leveling area.
Yeah, I think that was something.
So again, that's kind of a high-level overview of our peer review comments. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have now or later on in the evening.
Sure. I think the grade of that street was something that was mentioned by the fire department and other reviews as well. One of the things we touched on in a couple of questions was your request for additional counts at other intersections and the fact that there's both a college and a public elementary school in the area which are currently not in session. In terms of methodology to adjust for that, do you, I'm not sure if you heard Mr. Gillum's kind of proposed idea to adjust data to account for that? Or obviously, we are at the end of July, so we're probably six weeks away from those schools being back in session. So do you feel that kind of an adjusted rate count for those would account for those schools effectively?
You know, there's no perfect answer there. I mean, typically, we would want to look back to historic traffic counts so that we'd be able to use that as a basis of any adjustment. You know, the issue really becomes, is we try to account for those adjustments, it's not just the volume of traffic, it's traffic patterns. So if people are using specific roadways as cut-throughs as a result of congestion, and that congestion occurs because of school pickup or drop-off activities, the adjustments may not account for that. So it's a very difficult thing to try to adjust volumes to account for all of those circumstances. To the extent that the applicant wants to collect data while schools are not in session, we will look at how they, the methodology and the adjustments, but also we'll be looking at, you know, the traffic counts they perform at the project site, so where they measured, you know, at 154 Pine Street, that's going to be a data point. And then we also have the traffic counts up to the north at Plain Street. If we, if the adjustments are not reflective of what we see in the traffic patterns at those locations, which were measured when schools were in session, then they're going to need to be redone. So it's something that the applicant can certainly proceed in that manner, but they're going to need to make sure that they're looking at the, you know, any data that's available, as well as the existing counts that they performed, to make sure that any adjustments that were performed are reflective of what those patterns look like at the other intersections.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we just to add, Mr. Chairman, we typically, if I have a project, it's a residential project near a school, and someone hires me to do a traffic study now and there's no historic traffic counts, you know, I tell them we need to wait till September. We just will not collect the data, because it's very difficult to make adjustments absent having historic counts to look back towards.
Okay, thank you. And then members of the board have questions for Mr. Dirk, as it goes to the peer review for the traffic, obviously, there's more work to be done on this. So fortunately, unfortunately for you, Mr. Dirk, he'll be seeing us again in the future.
That's okay, my pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Mr. Dirk, with regards to T5, it references roadway improvement projects, and I'm wondering, does that include solely literal improvements? I'm more concerned about things like a sewer project going, let's say, on Elm Street, because that is going to potentially change traffic patterns. So I just wanted to make sure that improvements included things that may not in the near term be an improvement or an immediate improvement.
Right. I think a roadway improvement project is probably more of an overgeneralization. It's not necessarily something that results in, you know, an improvement in capacity or things like that. But it's not only roadway improvement projects, it's basically any road construction project or any project in particular that would result in an alteration in traffic volumes or trip patterns in the area. So if there's a detour, something, it may be that there's no roadwork going on in this area, however, there's a detour place someplace that causes traffic patterns or volumes to change, that, there needs to be an understanding of that level of activity. So it's not just increases in volumes or changes in volumes, it's changes in traffic patterns as well. So it's kind of an all-encompassing description of a roadway improvement project, but it's anything that alters capacity, traffic volumes, or trip patterns.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further with the peer reviewer here? Jim, I'll make sure to make a point to ask you directly here remote if you have anything in person, because as much as I like to read people's eye language through Zoom, I don't trust them.
No, I do not have any other questions, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dirk. We'll be hearing from you again in the future. Okay. So we've covered traffic, we've gone through updates from the applicant. I was going to speak specifically to water, if there was anything else they wanted to discuss at this point, because the water's been a point that a lot of the residents has mentioned. I just wanted to run through the letter from the Water and Sewer Commissioner, so everybody can see it if they haven't had a chance already. So Brian, if you could, you don't need to pull up the whole thing, because it's two pages long. But a summary of points that I kind of drafted down here is that the use of well number one and increased activity at this area are not specifically linked, because it's more of a discussion of overall volume. The federal funding coming in is going to well replacements for wells four, five, and six, which are the largest in town. And they would look to limit the use of wells number one and three after that point, once that was complete. The Water Commissioner's opinion, as I think Bob covers covered a little bit, is that they feel that some of the water quality issues on Pine Street are linked to lower irrigated flow demands based on the size of the pipe. I guess going back 20 years, the strategy was put a big pipe so you don't need to take out a small pipe and put in a big one later. But that means that you have excess capacity in those pipes, and when you don't have enough flow, you do have that settling. So in the Water and Sewer Commissioner's opinion, more development in that area would increase flows and potentially improve the water quality. So that's their opinion. They also touched on the sewer a little bit, which we've touched on again today. I am not an engineer, but depending on how we continue to discuss this project, it may be something where it makes sense for someone, potentially myself, just to go to attend the Water and Sewer Commissioner hearing and ask the engineers directly. Maybe else have any questions related to Mr. Fornier's letter from members of the board that we'd like to get clarity on in follow-up? Their meeting was, I think, a couple hours earlier, so that's why they weren't able to attend this evening.
With what you just said, I, I understand that the goal is to use the federal money to find larger supplies of water for the town.
Replace four, five, and six, which are the largest wells.
Right. And so what if what they find isn't larger? It seems like, I mean, it seems like the response from Water and Sewer is that we're going to have more water because of the federal money, but are we? Is something that I think we should kind of press the line.
That's the goal. Obviously, if they can make water appear, then.
Then we.
Then they boot Arizona into Millionaire.
Right, exactly.
But yeah, I mean, we have to, I think that's the plan. I assume that there are years of looked at groundwater tables and things like that.
I know from watching, watching past meetings, a lot of it isn't finding new water, it's replacing the actual wells, the actual wellhead is damaged, it needs to be a bigger pipe, yada, yada. So I believe the last well they did was very close to the existing one. So a lot of times, it's just the money to actually drill the new well and all the new piping that's, could be really close to the old one, if you know what I'm saying. So it's really just the money to pay for that work, not so much finding new water.
Yeah, I'd like to have something in terms of a water system design standard or something like that, where we can say, this is the level of flow you usually have on this street, this is what the pipe is sized for, here's your problem. So that's something that I think would be helpful for us to have as, I think, obviously, we all live in town, we've all had water that comes up in not necessarily a clear fashion, so just to, we live it, we know it, we want to have it reflected and understand what we're going to be, what this project would mean. And if it does, and if it is going to mean a potential improvement in water quality, then that's something that we can, that we can look at. Okay.
Yes, I do have one question, and I guess it depends on the, my earlier question, where the option is available for the contractor to the water main at Bridge Street, which would change the direction of the flow and flow rate, which is great for Pine Street. However, I guess I'm concerned about the change in direction would then therefore cause a new issue at the other end of the line for whoever sits there, and are we literally just robbing Peter to pay Paul?
That is another further question, if everything is connected.
Yes.
So I do not, I am not qualified enough to make that engineering judgment, and I will stop there. But yeah, I think the Water Commissioner meets on the second and fourth Tuesdays, and they get 5:30. So we'll see if it makes sense for me to join one of their upcoming meetings and just kind of get a little bit of that straight from them. Does anybody else from the board have anything else they want to discuss as to what we discussed today, or open questions that they have for the applicant? Otherwise, I would move and ask members of the public to come forward, and if they have things they'd like to share, please go ahead. Okay. Obviously, we have a little bit more room here than we did in the last space. So obviously, I'm not going to tell anybody they can't speak, but if anybody hasn't, wasn't able to speak the last meeting, again, please come up to the podium here, state your name and address for the record. Anybody who are waiting in your chairs, you can kind of queue up a little bit behind, obviously, give everybody some personal space, and we'll go from there. So if anybody wants to step forward, I'm not going to choose hands here. If anybody joining remotely would like to speak, I'll just ask if you can look in your Zoom meeting, there is a reactions button, and there's a raise hand function that looks like this when you want to speak. Thank you, Bob, for demonstrating. And if you put your hand up, I will assume that you are waiting to speak related to this project, and I'll try and go back and forth between in-person and virtual comments as best I can. If nobody in person is going to jump up to the podium here, I will let, oh, no, I'll talk. And Bob, I'll get you right away after that, if you don't mind.
Eugene Norberto, I live at 55 Pine Street. I guess a couple of concerns I have is the traffic. I've heard the engineer say the average speed or whatnot was 39.
There's low thermese right at the site.
Yeah, I'm skeptical on those things.
That's what the machine said, that's all, that's all we can.
I get it, but I question that. It's a major, it's a major cut-through from 123, a lot of the industrial pipe, traffic flows through, cuts through there, but that's a concern I have right there. And the other concern is the water, not just the water quality, but the water capacity. We've had a water being for, as long as I can remember. How's this development going to affect the capacity, you know?
That is certainly a concern.
So basically, basically, the concern is the traffic flow and the water capacity.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, sir.
That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Bob, obviously, you still have your hand raised there on the meeting. I'll ask if you could please come off mute. If you'd like to join on camera, please do. I would like you to state your name and address for the record as soon as you come off mute. And go for it.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, yeah, this is Bob Butler, 133 Pine Street. I had several concerns I'd like to go through, if you don't mind. Some of them I brought up with the Conservation Commission, it was the last week, I believe. So I just kind of wanted to kind of reiterate some of those concerns as well as some more specific to the finding board.
Sure.
So first, I'm concerned that this notice of intent is being looked at as a complete project, when it's really one part of a larger project on Pine Street. This notice of intent only shows 136 acres on the east side of Pine Street, but this landowner also purchased another 51 acres on the west side of Pine Street, and another 18 acres just had AMRAD done on the east side of Pine Street. So that's 205 acres total. And this impacts, you know, calculations on the BBW alteration within the ACEC. And the applicant stated that the, to Pine Street of Batters, that they would like to build 20 more homes on the parcels on the west side of Pine Street. Looking at the AMRAD for those parcels, I see there's no way that you could really build 20 homes unless you're planning on building through or over BBWs. So I have a concern that the applicant may be doing this intentionally to avoid having the Army Corps engineers involved in the project, in the total project, instead of, you know, the divided up project.
Yeah, I know that the idea, the concept of project segmentation was something that was discussed at the Conservation hearing by the peer reviewer, I believe.
Yes, it was, correct. Okay. Another thing is the, I think there's a discrepancy in the acreage in these parcels. I believe the applicant was claiming to be 105 acres, and it's shown as 136 acres on the assessor maps. I think Paul stated he would ask the peer reviewer to update that. So this is for the open space calculation, which the applicant said they had 53.4 acres beside a side for open space. They have not said how much of that acreage is non-wetlands, because the bylaw for the cluster subdivision states the open space must be 35% of the acreage, not including wetlands, ponds, marshes, et cetera.
Yes. No, that's, that's definitely something I know the applicant said that they haven't responded to the peer review comments and writing yet, so that would be something they would confirm.
Okay. I didn't know if there's any comment on, if there were any corrections or explanations on the, on the total acreage on these parcels.
Yeah, I think I'll leave that for the applicant and the peer reviewer. I have learned, for better or for worse, not to trust any map that comes out of, that dates back before the last five years in order, so.
Okay. I also looked at the Mass Habitat of Rare Species map. I don't see anything on these parcels, but there is a large priority habitat of rare species taking up a portion of the land on the parcels on the west side of Pine Street that this developer owns. So this rare species habitat abuts the pond or brook which is running through the parcels in this notice of intent on the east side of Pine Street. So technically, I guess it's not. So technically, I guess it's not. Within the priority habitat, but it's, it's right up close to it, abutting it.
Yeah, and I know they are doing a wildlife review as part of the project, but yes, no, it's good to. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so speaking of wildlife review, is that in addition to the environmental impact statement? I believe they're two different things, right? The environmental impact statement is one thing, and then there's like a wildlife habitat evaluation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have the applicant come up and clarify that. Once you, I'll let you go through the rest of your questions and then I'll have them.
Okay. I was actually, I'm on the west side of Pine Street, by the way, but I haven't seen a development plan for land on this side yet. But this is on this side of Pine Street is where the Rufford and Weeding Rivers flow into the Three Mile River. And this is, you know, ACEC. That there's, you know, a lot of wildlife. There's a Native American historical site. I was just curious if there's any possibility that the Norton Land Preservation Society would be like interested in purchasing. Or acquiring any of this land. That has not yet been, you know, slated for development.
That would certainly be something they could evaluate. I know that some of the land is for sale for a while. But obviously, it's not my money, so.
Okay. Yeah, I know this actually abuts. The, what is it? On the other side of. Rufford River and the Weeding River, there's the preservation land over there. So it kind of would abut that land if they did acquire it. Anyways, a question on the sewer line. Are they, are we only looking at connecting to the sewer line? On Briggs? Street at this point? Is there any?
My evaluation is.
You know, that they're looking to build or make a sewer line on Pine Street itself?
My evaluation is that the sewer design is too early to tell what they would look to do.
Okay. If there was a sewer line down Pine Street, I had concerns about, you know, the cost for the homeowners. If we had to tie into it or not. Who would be paying that for that? And. You know, I have, you know, perfectly operating septic systems, so I don't really feel a need to tie into a public sewer line.
No, I understand.
Yeah, okay. Also, my home is below the street level, so I'm not really sure, you know, that could be a concern as well if I had to tie into it. If I had to tie into a sewer line. I'm hoping it's just the new streets are going to be tying in to the existing sewer line and that doesn't impact Pine Street, so.
And one second, I think one of the other board members had, was gonna just try and clarify one of the points you brought up.
In Mr. Fornier's letter in the last paragraph, it says, at this time, there are no plans by our department on the table to add sewer to Pine Street. If that helps in any way.
Did we were able to hear that, Bob?
Yes, so hopefully it stays off, stays off the table, I'm hoping. Okay, traffic study, I think it was mentioned, you know, about Wheaton not being in session. Also, I don't know if, I don't think anything was ever mentioned about Pine Street and Route 123 intersection. That's kind of a tough intersection, and even if you only have, you know, a few cars in front of you, it could take several minutes to be able to get out, you know, during commuting time. So I don't know if that particular intersection was or should be looked at.
Okay.
And I also bring that up because, as I mentioned, there's other, looks like there's other development projects that could be coming up on Pine Street. And that's just going to, you know, increase the traffic even more. So. It seems like we're kind of looking at things. As this is, you know, how this is going to impact the traffic, but should we be looking at the total picture of like all the development that's being planned for Pine Street?
Yeah, that was one of the peer reviewers' points for the traffic was to coordinate. With both. The department, in terms of the department planning and development as well as highway and mass DOT. To confirm not only potential roadway impacts, but additional development impacts as well.
Okay. And also, you know, well, number one is, is a problem. It's not only recent filtration projects. And we always have the highest levels of manganese and sediment. So it's not just sediment, you know, it's the manganese as well, which is, you know, not good for you in the long term. Norton Water Department has no plans to either treat well number one or shut it down. You know, residents on Pine Street are commonly calling the water department to flush lines as we get very dark brown water. Constantly changing house sediment filters, flushing our hot water heaters. And required using bottled water for drinking. And we're, you know, I'm curious on during the construction even, you know, how, how is that going to impact? Our water quality as they. Install new water beans and new, you know, forty-four new tie-ins. Are we constantly going to have sediment issues during construction, which will take several years?
That's certainly.
The superintendent stated that he thought the water quality may improve with increased water demand. But honestly, this sounds like a theory rather than a resolution. I just also wanted to mention that, you know, the Norton Water Quality Report for 2021 were in violation on TTHMs. So I think that, you know, the water quality just needs to be improved in general.
I don't think I'll get many arguments on that point.
Okay. Let's see, I, yeah, I mentioned the wildlife habitat evaluation. So the, the stormwater is a concern. There is a stream or brook that runs from the east side of Pine Street, right near Jermaine Way. Runs under Pine Street and runs, you know, behind my house. This is, you know, a constant stream. And it actually flows down into a pond and then to a dam and down to a Three Mile River. So I have concerns because, you know, in the springtime, you know, I have some pump in the basement that needs to run because of the high water table. Due to that water behind my house. So. A little concerned with any kind of changes that might impact the water flow there. I know it's more of a, you know, Concom conversation, but.
Stormwater review is part of our process, and that's something that the peer review engineers will look at. The stormwater bylaws are that they can't have any more outflow off of the site than they do in a no-build condition. So they have to be equal to or less than in terms of the outflow off the site in a stormwater event.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I recall hearing that as well. I was a little bit surprised that in the Concom meeting that they, this was considered an intermittent stream through this land here. And it really isn't. There's still water there now and we're going to drill, so. It's just a personal concern of mine. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Claire, if you wouldn't mind coming up just to clarify the. If there's any differentiation between the different environmental slash wildlife reports that are being compiled.
Yes. So the environmental impact statement, that's more in response to the planning board's requirements for the. Subdivision application, from what I understand. So that's what that report is specifically addressing. The wildlife habitat evaluation is something that the Conservation Commission requested because of the wetland fill. And ultimately, a wildlife habitat evaluation is required under the Wetlands Protection Act if you exceed any of the thresholds of impacting a resource area. We are under the 5,000 square foot threshold for impacting bordering vegetated wetlands or BBW. But since we're requesting approval under a limited project and it's within an ACEC. The Conservation Commission has the discretion to request that wildlife habitat evaluation, which they did. So we're doing that and evaluating the wetland crossing itself. And in addition to that, the provisions of the limited project application. Require a level of an alternative analysis. And we provided a certain level of that in our application, but. The commission did request further alternatives analysis to be provided with the wildlife habitat evaluation. And that'll look at a potential alternative from Briggs Street. So that's, that's where they're sort of two different.
Okay.
Situations.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure, of course.
Ms. Salvati, I do see you there with your virtual hand raised. I'm going to go back in person and I'll come to you right after that, okay?
Sir, if you'd like to come and state your name and address. My name is Peter Barad from 121 Pine Street.
Thank you.
A couple of things. One, on the, on the water. Heard a couple of conflicting things. One of the things that you were saying is. They're saying if we increase the use, that, that the water would be clearer. Okay, potentially.
That is their assertion, yes.
Right. The other thing is on the improvements for, was it four, five, and six?
Yes.
That if they did that, that, and they said limit the use of pump number one.
That would speak to the overall pump out from well one.
Right, okay, so.
Improvement of the quality of the water and everything.
Right, so that would decrease the use of pump number one.
Correct.
So what happens when all of a sudden, a lot of us are using the water and pump number one kicks in? We're going to get flooded with black water. That's potentially what's going to happen. And even with, let's say, we do increase our use of the water. The contaminants that are in there, whatever you call it, manganese or whatever, they're still there. If you use the water, it just kind of spreads it out over a larger usage. And we won't see it. And it's like, well, it's great we don't see it, but it's still there. So that pump is still going to be a problem in that one.
Yeah, I think the goal is to, the goal of the Water Commissioner is to expand four, five, and six as much as possible. So that you can have as much wire as possible running through the filtration system.
Right, I agree with that. I think that's a great idea, but pump number one is.
I can't speak to how the capacity will stack up and when those are used.
But if pump number one, if pump number one all of a sudden kicks in, then it's like, I hope you don't have your whites in the laundry. So the other thing is on the traffic report, they're, they're saying that it's going to be about twenty-two more cars per day.
Just depends from the initial review.
Right.
Which the peer review said does need to be revised.
Yes, but consider this. You've got forty-four houses. Most houses have two, at least two, some three, some four cars. So even if you said, okay, the average is two to three, right, you're talking, we're still talking about a hundred house, a hundred cars in that neighborhood. That's going to add to it. Now. You've got to figure at least one car is leaving every morning to go to work, you know, on a regular workday. So that's at least forty-four cars, right? Both me and my wife work, okay? So it's probably more like sixty to eighty cars per day, okay? Then consider, there are two additional projects. I know that hasn't been brought up yet, but potentially, there's two more projects. So it's like, okay, so if we're talking sixty cars here and then two more projects, there's going to be another sixty, so we're talking 120, 180 cars. Okay, so now the traffic study, they did a count where the streets are going to, where the Jermaine Way would come into Pine Street. It's like, okay, they did like counting over there, they did counting over at Plain Street. The real problem area is when you get to Route 123, okay? Now, I don't know if they did any accident reports right at that intersection. But that's, the problem there is when people are trying to get out on 123, there's small gaps, so people rush. And, and we have more accidents there. So I think, I think a accident report needs to be done right at the intersection. Now, even today, if you go out there on a regular day, right, like when I leave for work in the morning, I can be backed up four or five cars, okay? So you add eighty cars, right? So what's going to happen is that's going to get backed all the way up. People are going to turn to Plain Street, now they're going to go down by the school, okay? Because nobody wants to turn all the way around and go all the way down and go through the industrial park. Nobody's going to want to do that. So everybody's going to go there. The other thing they're going to do is they're going to start cutting through Wheaton College. Because I've done it myself. I mean, because I see it getting backed up. So then Wheaton College is going to be over, well, going to the town at least. Saying, hey, you're going to keep your cars off our property or something. It's, these are things that I think need to be considered. But the traffic's going to get backed up over there. I mean, just as it is, it's already backed up. So if we add all of these cars in there, and I think that's where the traffic study really needs to be done. It's going to be done right there. Because that's, that's where it's going to really take effect. That's where you're going to see the effect of all of these other cars, you know, being added into there. And then if it keeps getting backed up like that, then the next thing that we're going to have to do is we're going to have to add another traffic light. And nobody wants to see another traffic light there because, I mean, we went from a town that had, what, one traffic light? So now we've got, well, when they ever, they put the one over at Washington Street, when they put that one in, we're going to have four traffic lights. And then this is going to be another one. It's like, and going, going from the center of town to 495, it's going to be light after light after light after light. It's ridiculous. It's already to a point where it's ridiculous. But I think all these things need to be considered, but especially with the, the traffic patterns. I think you got, you need to be looking at it at the right place, not back where the added cars are coming in, because it's not going to be bad over there. It's going to be bad at the end of the street.
I think that's why we have the peer review engineer for the traffic on, who's here sharing his thoughts. And I think if I was reading between the lines, he wasn't necessarily being very charitable towards some of the original studies, so.
I just think a couple of things need to be pointed out. It may be obvious or may not.
Yeah, but there's definitely some work to be done on refining the traffic. I mean, to your point of. Do a simple calculation, how many houses, how many cars? That's what the, their engineer manuals are for, for all those.
Yeah, it just seems very low to me. And then if we start looking at other projects, because of the decisions that you guys make here. The, you know, later on, the other projects, they're going to say, well, we did four, so why can't we do it again?
Yep.
So we got to consider the future.
And that's why one of the points the peer reviewer made was to make sure that the town shares any other potential developments in the area that could impact traffic. So then those can be factored into the decision.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Salvati, thank you for being patient. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please, and whatever your.
Sure.
I'll let you go as long as you want. Time permitting until I get sleepy.
Oh, sure. I'm not going to go on too long. So Kelly Salvati, I'm at 151 Pine Street, so I am directly across from the 154 entrance. To that development, which I believe is only half of the amount of homes that are discussed in this entire forty-four home cluster development. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I agree with Bob and the other gentleman about the Pine Street 123 intersection. I drive it every day. Work from home, take my kids to and from school, and I frequent that area, and it is a nightmare. I came from Reservoir Street. I'm a lifelong resident of Norton. And just wanted to point that out, that I have a concern about that as well. My only other question would be. As far as the sightlines, the changing of the sightlines when they talked about the traffic impact. If things need to be cut down, cut back, changed for sightlines, does that go back to Concom? For their evaluation of vegetation and changing the environment, you know?
It would be part of the plans that they would review and approve.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
And as, as well as kind of, and the, and one of the other points was in terms of maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
This is looking like a project which would have a homeowners association or some kind of group that was responsible for maintenance of potentially the open space or some other areas.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be something that would be specified in that agreement, that, that group was responsible for that, um, in the interest of safety.
Okay. And then I just had one other comment. Um, I noticed, I didn't get a chance to read the letter from Mr. Fornier, um, ahead of time, but I did see it when you put it up on the screen. There's a comment that he made in regards to the fact that the residents were upset about, you know, the water, which, you know, is a fact. Um, but he also mentioned that we had the opportunity as residents to purchase this land at some point. So I'm not sure what his comment was trying to say there because it was, to me, that felt like it was very unnecessary in a comment back to the, the applicant about our concerns about the water. So, um, I don't know if that is something that gets addressed or just mentioned, but I'd like to mention that that comment was pretty unnecessary in his comment back to them as an applicant.
Thank you for your thoughts. I think all of the members of the board have their own thoughts and comments, but all the materials we've reviewed.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. If you could just lower your virtual hand there, otherwise my eye is going to keep looking down at it and getting distracted. Um, I know we have a non-person right here. If you wanna come to the podium, uh, go right ahead. Maybe just state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Casey Lauren, 141 Pine Street.
Thank you.
Several of the, the points I had here, um, have already been mentioned. Uh, I definitely agree with, um, the big problem area as far as traffic being at the intersection of 123 and Pine that hasn't been addressed in any traffic study of years yet, so we definitely need to look at that. And the point about LGN and Wheaton both needing to be in this session. The 22 additional cars sounds very low. A couple of points that I hadn't heard mentioned today was, um, with the water, uh, letter that was addressed. Uh, it's talked about how the, um, the old way of thinking was make the, the water mains big, which created stagnant water, blah, blah, blah. All of the, um, water mains on Pine Street were just replaced, like, two years ago. So if that's the case, that thought process.
That was a generality. I cannot speak to what pipe is in what ground of a three day.
Sure, but I just, I just wanted to bring up the point that Pine Street has new water mains that should be sized appropriately if that's the case. Another point, um, I currently have a daughter who, uh, is on her way into first grade. Um, so, you know, the school stuff is pretty high importance for me at the moment. I don't know if there's been any sort of, um, thoughts on what this additional development and any future developments, um, mean for, um, the current, um, size of the schools and obviously the staffing in schools, which already seems to be a problem, and resources and all of that sort of stuff for the schools. Um, obviously if we're adding right now 44 more houses plus an additional, however many, um.
Trying to guess to me how many people have kids.
A bunch of those are gonna have kids and that's gonna be more, more, uh, taxing on the school system. Just wanted to make sure that was brought up, I guess. And my other, um, points I had here were, um, I, I did also, um, watch the, um, Concom meeting last Monday and I believe I saw in there that the peer reviewer stated, and maybe I'm wrong, but the way I understood it, they stated that the, the expected 4,600 square feet of, um, wetlands, uh, impacts or disturbances, whatever it's called. Um, they expected that they would probably exceed that. They thought that number seemed low. And if, something that I think Claire mentioned, uh, and I thought I heard in that meeting also, was when you get over 5,000 square feet, uh, it triggers additional permits and, and maybe something to do with the Army Corps of Engineers and stuff like that. So if, if that number is indeed low and it is gonna be over 5,000, I think that certainly something needs to be looked at.
Yeah, everything, A is reflected on the plans in, in terms of there's, we don't, there isn't just an approval, the approval of the plans and then we just kinda trust that everything happens as it is. A lot of peer reviews, there are onsite visits for specific aspects of it to verify that erosion controls are in place and those kinds of things are, uh, followed. And if those things aren't followed, then the building commissioner has the authority to say, everybody go home. We're gonna figure this out.
Okay, sure. And then, again, something that, it sounds like you, you, uh, were either virtually in attendance for that meeting or, or watched it.
Watched it.
But, uh, one of the things I remembered hearing about was that, um, this right now is being applied for as a limited project. Um, and one of the Concom members, um, had said that, maybe I, again, I don't, I'm, I'm not one of these peoples, so I may have misinterpreted it wrong, but it sounded like they said that if the, um, if there was an additional access possible to get to that tract of land, then they wouldn't be able to use this as a, a limited project. Uh, maybe that other one isn't ideal for the project, but if there is indeed an additional way to get to that spot, I think it causes, um, them to not be able to.
Yeah, the ACEC is something that, if that process and that box is not checked, the project doesn't happen on that side of the line. So that's, that would be, require a significant redesign of everything.
Sure.
But to a point, as the applicant mentioned, the, the previous conservation unit did ask them to do that. So it's, um, there's a, it's a, a layered discussion.
Right. No, I, I totally get that, but it sounds like it, it goes higher than the normal conservation commission, regardless of what they asked for, cause it goes up to the DEP and, and, um, Wetlands Protection Act and whoever else is involved. And, yeah, I, I understand the reason why it was asked for based on what was presented to us in the other meetings with the, the burnables and stuff over there. Um, but it, it sounds like maybe neither is a good option, based on what's been presented.
Sure. I've always made it a point to say that I don't tell developers how to design the projects.
Right. And I think that was all I had.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else with a virtual hand raised in the Zoom call. I'll turn around and see if. There we go.
Hi, so Ellen Turner, I live at 145 Pine Street. And, um, talked a lot about traffic and I also just wanted to mention that there actually is a lot of pedestrians, bikes. I know that's been mentioned briefly, but it is times when you're driving down the road on a nice day and you've got pedestrians going in different ways and you're just driving down the middle of the road slowly because that's the only way to dodge all the pedestrians. And I just feel like it happened for that mentioned at this meeting, so I wanted to mention it again. And another thing, I think Bob brought this up, that there's, I get, I'm some sort of like endangered species, there's special species on the other side of the street. And I don't, and I guess there isn't that sort of study been done in this, in the area that's being developed right now. And I just, you know, a couple of years ago, we were out walking and we were over in the area and, um, we noticed it's just the, probably what were the horse fields are now milkweed fields. And I understand that, um, the monarch butterfly is now an endangered species. So I'm wondering if this, I don't know if this falls into one of the other studies and will be, um, looked at, but I just wanted to mention that, having been actually on the property, that I was very surprised to see that. At the time, I had no idea it was development, like, this is great.
Yeah, no, I know that they're, they're doing a wildlife review, um, in terms of the monarch specifically. The state has its own list that it keeps, so when, if the monarch goes on there, then that falls into all of the things that the, the state oversees.
Okay.
I'm Susan Barad, I live at 121 Pine. I'm one of the walkers. I walk like that. You can't walk in the grass, it's all poisonous. And you're adding another 100 cars, it's dangerous. Around my corner, they fly down there. They rather hit you. So please consider that and what.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in person that would like to, to speak further? Obviously, if you'd like to come up again, I spoke at the last meeting. I'm gonna ramble here for about 20 seconds, give you a chance to get up.
Maybe one more suggestion?
Yes, please.
Um, just a suggestion on the traffic. Um, I know on Reservoir Street, they have a speed limit sign and on top there's a, a radar, blinking radar, read out the touch of your speed. Maybe that's another suggestion to be using on, on Pine Street.
Okay.
It, it does make people more aware of, you know, their speed.
Yeah, I think they're just, uh, some of them are mobile and some of them are permanent.
Yeah, the, the, the permanent, the permanent type.
Yeah. Okay.
Items like that, Tim, that would be suggestions, suggestions from the peer reviewer.
Yeah, I know they talked about the stop signs and all of the sightlines, anything like that would be, uh, around two or three of those discussions, I would think. Okay, so I think I've rambled long enough. Um, I think, Bob, if you don't mind coming back up here, I think that, um, our next kind of, interesting is, you have not submitted any responses back to Horsley and Witton, um, or VNS specifically to the traffic. Um, and you're also meeting with conservation on different things. So in terms of how all those pieces are coming together, um, what do we feel is an appropriate timeline for, um, us to discuss further in terms of going back and forth with Horsley, Witton, and/or VNS? Um, in terms of having you back here with meaningful, uh, we don't wanna have you come here and not have anything to say.
We don't wanna waste your time either, if it's only one thing to mention or whatever. So, I don't know, I'm thinking, um, if we could do like a month for now or so, if that works for the board. I don't know when you meet, so.
August 30th would be the second.
That's correct. And then we, could we have the?
We have the 16th and the 30th.
16th and the 30th? So the 16th would be three weeks from now and the 30th would be five weeks.
I would take the five weeks if possible.
Okay.
Well, if, if, even if we can get everything submitted, I wouldn't ask Horsley or Witton to turn it around any day.
No.
When's the next conservation meeting, just for?
Uh, that's an excellent question. We'll have that.
On date for the 8th, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter knows all of those, so, thank you, Peter. Okay. Do we have any further questions for the applicant or anything else in the rest of this project, um, prior to continuing?
Make a motion to continue DEF 13932 and SP 14704 to August 30th.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Ellen, for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, here we go. I'm gonna go through the roll again. It's been a couple hours here, but. Eric?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We are continued to August the 30th. Thank you very much, everyone. If you are going on your way out, please, we are still gonna finish up our meeting here. So we ask you to try and be, uh, at least a little bit quiet, obviously there's a lot of people, but, uh, we'll just keep going.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Are we gonna reach out to Frank? He's probably getting very virtual right here.
I'm gonna try and figure something out. Whether it is in terms of specific questions out of water in the city commission hearing or something in terms of further comments. Something that affects everybody in town, but specifically with this project, this is an area where the water is, more significantly impacted than others, I think is probably.
There's a few of the smaller questions that I think you can answer very easily if you're there.
Yeah, no, exactly. Yeah, I mean, uh, as I say, they had their meeting earlier, so, double, back to back on it would be, uh, would be a pretty long day, I would think. So I understand, uh, the written letter. But, yeah, so in terms of, um, other business, uh, before we close, Brian, I just wanted to ask you, I think one of the items in the peer review was for the Department of Planning, Economic Development to supply information to any other developments going on. Do you feel like you need support with that?
I mean, I can sort of keep them up to date for anything that comes through permanently.
Yeah, the, for Pine Street, one of the requests from the peer reviewer was that the Department of Planning, Economic Development supply information on any in-progress or proposed projects that impact the traffic at the period. Do you feel like you need additional support with that?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
It did do an ad hoc for that other parcel.
Yeah, so.
So there was something.
For that other parcel, yeah, on Pine, yeah. So that, so the other Pine Street parcel would be part of it. The sewer, the sewer project would come from DOT, from highway, uh, to your point, Laura.
And then the new application we have for Zero Pine Street is creating a couple of lots. Uh, Zero Crane Street is creating lots on Pine Street as well.
Yeah.
And that, I just looked at, like, two hours before I came here.
So I think, um, I think just letting the applicant and the peer reviewer know those developments, whatever they are. So I mentioned the other, the adjacent parcel on Pine Street, or the, uh, adjacent, but across the street parcel, correct? The Crane Street, um, are there any other projects that come to mind? I don't.
There's been, um, some test falls dug in between 126 and 82 Pine Street, which is about an 19 acre parcel.
Okay. I'm trying to think. I know in whatever the last traffic report that we did, Paul had submitted information. I forget what that was. If you feel like you need additional support in terms of what needs to be shared or anything like that, please let me know and we'll work on it. Okay? Is there anything else anybody wanted to discuss as the board with this evening's discussion?
Motion of your.
Okay, we have a motion from Ellen and I think Eric got the second in just under the wire. It's close.
Just under the second.
Okay, he's having a further discussion on the motion to adjourn. Here it is, I'll go through the roll again. Eric?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Wayne?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.